The Board of Finance, March 10th, 2021 will call this meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for being here. A special meeting, we have one item to hear on our agenda, and that's item number three, which is to hear an update on the revaluation 2020 and grand list. And we have with us tonight, Mr. Ross Murray, our tax accessor, along with representatives from Municipal Valuations. Thank you all for being here. So the budget 2022 deliberations officially start tomorrow. However, tonight's meeting, as we know, is an important step in that process before we discuss the budget as a whole. So we'll hear a presentation from Mr. Murray and Municipal Valuations. The Board of Finance will then ask some questions. We will review the methodology of the rebound as we need to be confident, we need to be comfortable in the grand list before we start our budget process. So the grand list increase, as we know, year over year is historically high. And the budget as is presented and the decisions that were made by the first select woman in the Board of Selectmen and what decisions we will make are reliant on this grand list. So with that said, Mr. Murray, I'll turn it over to you. And again, thank you for being here.
Good evening, thank you. You all should have a copy of the presentation. So I'm just going to run through that to start, and then we'll have, we'll let Mr. Fazio fill in. Revaluations, we're required to do them every five years by state statute and were required to visit homes once every 10 years. And, uh, once every 10 years. So this revaluation was not where we were required to do the site visit. That was done five years ago. Those revaluations are typically referred to as a full. The last revow was 2015, that was the full revaluation. This revaluation was, um, you typically call these an update. So we are updating the existing data without making significant changes to the, um, to the coding. You know, it's not that we don't make changes, but it's not wholesale changes. And the purpose of doing a revaluation, the reason it's required is to equalize the valuation amongst all properties. You need to account for the, the changes in value over time. And of course, our revaluation was completed by Municipal Valuations, and they are a Fairfield-based company. During the review, we did add a couple of neighborhoods, or I should say, we carved up a couple of existing neighborhoods, and there are four new ones, and those are listed in the next slide, page four. We added docs, they had never been picked up in the past. We added coding for deed-restricted or affordable housing. Those had never been segregated out in our coding. And we also added billboards, which also were not completely picked up in the past. On slide four, you can see the neighborhoods, the new ones are designated in, with 1, 2, 3, 4, and they came from the 1A, 2A, 3A, 4A. So up in the north, in the Stratfield area, down by the, um, blanking on the road name, but down in the beach area, 4, and then the north of the Turnpike, Fairfield University, and all the way over to Westport, we divided that up into two sections. The method of, of a revaluation is the same, whether it's a full or a, or an update. And that method is to analyze all the sales for a given period of time and produce the model. We, we develop a pricing model based on the sales. We look at sales starting as far back as January of 19 and all the way up through November 13th to develop the model. But the one-year period that we have to base our certification on is October 1 of 19 through October 1 of 20, the one-year period prior to the revaluation date. And that certification is sent to the state, to the Office of Policy and Management. We do still update properties during the 10-year period, and primarily, we do that based on permits and review of listing information or sales information, or just generally the public coming in with issues on their, on their field card, and we'll update them. The total sales that were analyzed in the one-year period were 1,003. It was 875 residential, 117 condominiums, and 11 commercial sales. And these are all valid sales. So we only look at true arms-length sales. We don't use, uh, sales that may be between a family member or what, that don't represent a true market value. For commercial properties, we analyze income and expense data that we gather every year. Chris Karen is also from Municipal Valuation, who did the, um, commercial side of it. Also used MLS, CoStar, and PWC Investor Services to help develop the commercial pricing model. So we developed the pricing model based on the sales, and then we test it statistically until we get the results we want, the statistic results we're looking for. And once we have those, we then apply it to all the unsold properties. As I mentioned, commercials primarily based on income and expense analysis. During the testing, we will look at various subsets to the data. We will look at it by neighborhood, by house style, and, and slice it up many different ways to ensure that, um, we're not having a group that's not representing or not falling into the, um, the statistics we're looking for. And I'll cover those in a minute. So once we're satisfied that that's all working properly, we apply it to all, the entire town and, um, send notices. So our ratios, there's four primary ratios that the, the state has us perform and test. The first is the sales ratio, and that is simply the sales price divided by the new value. And this, again, is only on the sold property. They are looking for a standard between 92 and 107%. The second ratio is a coefficient of dispersion. It measures the uniformity of the sales ratios. For residential, they want that to be less than 15%, and for commercial, less than 20. Another measure of uniformity is the price-related differential, and that ratio needs to be between 98 and 103%. And the last is the unsold ratio, and that has to be between 95 and 105. So how did we do? On slide eight, you'll see that our sales ratio was at 97%. And the standard, again, was 92 to 107. The coefficient of dispersion was 8, and we have to be under 15. Under 10 is considered, um, good. And our price-related differential was 1, and the standard there, again, is 98 to 103. Unsold property was at 99%, and the standard was 95 to 105. So we've met our ratio standards that the state puts out. Yes? Can't hear you.
Wait a second, so, do we have a question from someone? Do we have a question?
This is to you, Mr. Brown. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, my question to you is, are we holding questions to the end of the presentation? Or are we asking them along the way? I can do either one.
Yeah, my, my intent was to let Mr. Ross go through the presentation, and then we'll go back and, uh, ask questions.
Not a problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Continuing along. Overall, our commercial increased by 23%, and that was primarily by apartments, which we had four large new construction projects going on, car dealerships and service centers, and professional medical buildings. And our decreases were primarily in nursing homes. The next four slides are just to show you some of the volume in town. So the slide 11 is the sales volume during the study period. And you can see that the, you know, we had some pretty strong volume in the latter part of 2020. And if you, on slide 12, you can see that volume compared to, um, the prior year. So 2019 versus 2020. Slide 13 is, uh, just shows a average price by neighbor, average sales price by neighborhood. And I think that's probably not much of a surprise, pretty much what everybody, everybody knows. And the slide on 14 is the percent change by neighborhood. So we, um, essentially, if you, if you look at the map on page 15, you can see the, pretty much the west side of town saw decreases, whereas the eastern side saw increases with the beach area and Sherman leading the way. So once we completed this, we sent out our initial notices to every, to all the residents by, on December 7th. It included the prior assessment, the current, the new proposed assessment. It had information on how to arrange an informal here, hearing with Municipal Valuations, and it also had the deadline in there for the formal Board of Assessment Appeals deadline. Informal hearings were planned to end, um, in December, but Municipal Valuations extended those for an additional two weeks, and they did not end until the, until January 15th. They held 975 informal hearings, but some of those were on multiple properties. They changed the 263, 263 assessments, and 776 were unchanged, and that 10 people did not show up or did not call in. After that process ended, I sent out, Municipal Valuations sent out notices to all the people that they made changes to, or anybody, I'm sorry, anybody that had an informal hearing. And then I sent out notices to any assessments that were changed in my office. I also sent out notices to all new owners that, um, had purchased homes through the rebound period. We're tempted to get notices to everybody. The BAA deadline was February, Friday, February 19th, and we received 647 unique appeals. And it breaks down as 430 residential, 11 condo, 159 commercial, 35 multifamily. One person is appealing a farm classification, six personal property, and five have been withdrawn so far. We mailed all the notices of when the appellant's, um, appeal date were, were scheduled for by March 1st. And we're also following that up with a welcome email and a email of their, um, notice, uh, anywhere from three to five days out. We're handling a, quite a number of changes to hearing dates, reschedules, and follow-up documentation. Because of the governor's orders, and we're handling these, um, virtually in many cases, all the appeal documentation is scanned in. And initially, we scanned in about 9,700 pages, and we've now exceeded 12,000 pages with additional information that's been submitted. All the BAA hearings are recorded, and they're placed on the town website. Um, the deliberations that the BAA is holding are also recorded on the town website. As of March 8th, Monday, they had held 274 hearings, and they've had two days of deliberations. Actually, now they're up to three days. And the board plans to have all their hearings completed by March 22nd, and they are attempting to have all the deliberations done by the 31st. The last slide is just a bit of history on BAA. Here, um, number of appeals. So this year, 476 residential, and this is just residential. I did not have, um, data from prior years on commercial, so I kept this to just the residential. So 2015, um, the last revow was 279, 2010, 550, and then 2001 and 2005 were closer to 800 each year. Mike, do you want to add a little bit about your process and, um, the methodology you use?
Ross, thank you. So I was, I headed up the, my name's, again, my name's Mike Fazio. I'm one of the principals from Municipal Valuation. My partner, Chris Karen, is also on the call. He'll talk a little bit later about the commercial valuation. But I wanted to talk a little bit about how the model was created and how the model was applied to the properties in the town. The way the CAMIS system is set up is each property has its physical characteristics set up within the CAMIS system. And the CAMIS system is what drives the values, and that's what people have known as division software. So each property has physical characteristics set up, and to that, it's broken down into land and building. The first task was to examine all the sales in the town of Fairfield from January 1st of 19 through the present. We verified all the sales, we took, uh, we drove by them. I looked through the MLS to make sure the data that we had inside the CAMIS system was correct, because that's the first step to make sure what the CAMIS system has is correct compared to what the multiple listing or what physically is there. Because when you're looking for ratio testing and statistical testing, if, if your base that you're comparing it to is incorrect, then it'll throw the numbers off for everything else. So we examined all the sales, we compared it to multiple listing service. Once all the data was correct, I started looking at setting up land values. And as Ross indicated prior in the conversation, we broke a couple neighborhoods up because they just were too big or they didn't make sense. We moved a few lines. For example, Stratfield was, uh, very large, included North Stratfield and Stratfield area. I divided that into two because I was seeing that land values in one area were much different than the other. Once I set the land values for each neighborhood, then we drove down even further and see, we're looking to see if there were sub-neighborhoods within neighborhoods. And for example, along Fairfield Beach, we broke Fairfield Beach into several neighborhoods, uh, several, sub-neighborhoods based on how close the property was to the beach. For example, the first block, within the first block from the beach was valued at one rate. Then as you moved one block away, it had a different rate. And I believe there was three different categories that we broke the land values within the Sherman District of Fairfield Beach. Along Fairfield Beach waterfront, I divided that also into three separate areas for evaluation purposes. The first area was from the, uh, the, uh, beach club all the way down to Lantern Point. From Lantern Point down to a little bit past where the Donardo House is and where the flooding begins on Fairfield Beach Road was the second, uh, division. And then from that point, all the way down to the point was the third. They had slightly different land values due to, uh, different characteristics of location along the peninsula. Once I set all the land values, it was time to look at the building values and create depreciation tables. Those are driven by the condition of the property. Since this was a statistical revaluation, we did not visit every property. We used the information that was already supplied in the CAMIS system, do a lot of calculations. There was, uh, grades applied, and a lot of the statistics that we were running would allow us to judge the factors that were applied to these different grades. From that, uh, the values were combined land and building. We got a total value, and at that point, I ran statistics based on style, location, grade, age. And when, once I felt all the, uh, valuations were statistically correct, I applied the model to the entire town. And then we ran town-wide statistics, which was, it's called the unsold property test. And the theory behind that is if the sales are tracking well with the, with the, uh, model, then the model, once applied to the non-saled properties, will also be adjusted correctly. And the way that that is tested is there's an unsold property test. And for example, if the sales went up 10% and the unsold's went up 9%, you would do a division and it would show a percentage, and that percentage would have to fall within the state guidelines. And those guidelines were met with the statistical portion of the revaluation. I think that Ross covered the majority of the other methodologies and items that were completed by sending out notices and having hearings in his, uh, presentation. So if you have any other questions, I could ask, answer them at the end of this, uh, conversation. And I will turn it over to my partner, Chris, to he could talk a little bit about the commercial valuation portion of the revaluation.
You are, excuse me, Chris, you're on mute. Is it Mr. Karen? Still on mute.
Is this any better?
Much better.
All right, thanks. So I'm Chris Karen, I'm Mike's partner with MuniVal. Mike gave a good overview of the residential. The commercial follows along with it. Ross also gave an excellent overview of the whole process. The only difference really in the commercial that I'd like to touch on is that because, I like residential, you're, you're pretty much residential, you're staying in the town, and you're going back a year or two. For commercial, we go back further in time, and we go outside of town. A lot of the markets that you have in the commercial markets, they're regional markets. They're not just Fairfield markets. And then we divide all, all, all the commercial properties into different segments and tackle them individually. For example, we'll look at apartments, and we'll look at the apartment market segment. We'll look at apartments in Fairfield, but then we'll also look at the apartment market statewide and in Fairfield County. And we're appraisers, we've been doing this for 30 years, so we follow the apartment market. And by the time we get to do Fairfield, we have a pretty good idea where it is. So we do the apartment market, then we do the industrials, we do the retail, we do the office, and then we do the mixed use. We set tables for all of those individual ones, and then the, the mixed-use properties. And, uh, one of the main differences, we look at income and expenses also. So we're looking at sales, but a lot of the, uh, a lot of the properties that are commercial in town, our investment-grade properties, are purchased by investors, and they look at income and expenses as the basis of their purchasing decisions. So we look at the income and expense statements that are provided by the property owners. They're confidential, we take a look at those. And then we also look at the income, so if we're doing a property, we'll look at that property's income and expense statements. And then we'll also look at the neighbors, what they're getting for income and expenses. And we'll establish a market rental rate and a market expense rate and a market cap rate for that different property, for each specific property type. And that's how we go about establishing all the values. There are some properties that are, uh, unique, and you can't do them just based on, uh, you know, the, the information in the town. And we do those, we do one-off kind of analyses on those. Think of, uh, the nursing homes. We do a separate analysis on each nursing home, lodging, hotels, motels. We do separate analysis on those. So we have to go usually, uh, regional search for sales for those types of properties. And because they're unique, there's not, you know, five sales of, uh, nursing homes in town looking at sales all over the state. So we come up with all the values, we met with, you know, I personally did the, uh, you know, headed the valuation team, and I met with all of the, or talked to all of the property owners who came in for informal hearings. And sometimes in an informal hearing, you know, they're supplying you with income and expense information, and it doesn't tell the whole story. And also, there's a year delay between when you get the INE information and when you're doing the value. Right now, you're getting INE information for last year or this coming October. So talking to the property owner, sometimes they give you new information. We make an adjustment based on that. We had COVID, so COVID changed a lot of the, uh, the property dynamics, and we made some adjustments based on that. So we made adjustments where they were warranted, where they weren't warranted. We didn't, didn't make adjustments in the informal hearings. And then we sent, as Ross said, we sent notices out to everybody. So, uh, that's it in a nutshell for the commercial properties. Welcome any questions that you have for, for the three of us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your presentation. So, um, Mr. Murray, if you're, if you're finished, I'm going to turn this over to the board for some questions. Okay. Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris DeWitt. Thank you for the presentation, gentlemen, Mr. Fazio, nice seeing you, sir. Long time no see.
You too.
On the commercial, sorry, I don't know your last name, Chris. We're both Chris's here, so we can use first name. On slide nine, it says commercial increased by 23%. Is, is that value-wise, or is that quantity of, of commercial real estate?
That's value-wise. Led by the apartments, has been apartments have really, throughout the state of Connecticut, been on fire for the past five years. So we've seen a pretty dramatic increase, plus we had some new construction in town.
Right. Right, and
Yeah, there was, there was some significant new construction in the apartments.
Yeah, no, and, and thank, thank you, Mr. Murray. So the three, the three topics that, that led to the increase, the apartments, car dealerships, and professional medical, none of those, you know, were a surprise to me because I think if you drive around town, if you drive down Commerce, you're going to see all these new car dealerships and, and, and that. But are we seeing, so I guess, I guess what I was, what I was, you, you kind of asked, it's, it's a value, right? So we're not seeing commercial, sorry, we're not seeing, um, oh my gosh, residential land turning over to commercial at a rate of 23%. We're just seeing the, the current commercial space going up by a valuation of 23%.
That's exactly right, Chris, yeah. And, and it's led by those three, but we also did see some retail go up, and we saw, you know, some of the, the office mostly stayed about the same. But we did see other categories increase also. But it was led by those three main categories.
Yeah, that, no, that makes sense. But I'm, I'm confused why, um, nursing homes decrease the percentage. Can, can you explain that to me, please?
Yes, certainly. Nursing homes have, have been particularly hard-hit. Our, our dates, October 1st, you know, of last year. COVID decimated the nursing home industry in Connecticut. A lot of the deaths that we saw from COVID were people who were in nursing homes, and those beds were not filled again because people were not putting their, their fathers and their mothers into nursing homes during COVID. And even before that, there were structural changes in the state of Connecticut, where they were going away from the nursing home model and going more towards a stay-at-home model, where they were giving reimbursements for you to stay at home. So the nursing home industry was struggling prior to COVID, and the values for nursing homes were, you know, declining somewhat even without COVID. But now that, you know, when COVID hit, it really does. But now that, you know, when COVID hit, it really decimated them. And nursing homes are closing throughout the state. So it's just emblematic of what's been going on.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you for that. I, I can understand the COVID, I can understand the, the revenue generating portion of it. But I thought in Fairfield, compared to the last time we did a, a revow, we probably got more nursing homes quantity wise than we did before. I don't know if that's true or not, though.
Yeah, this wasn't, you know, this wasn't a quantitative, what you were referring to, it was more how much the value has changed. So even if you had a new one go in, it, it, when it went in, it's not worth as much now as it was when it went in.
Sure, okay. That's great, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Mr. Matola?
Can you hear me, everyone?
Yep.
All right, a follow-up on Mr. DeWitt's question, are assisted living facilities in the same category as nursing homes or are they different?
They're, they're in the elderly category. They, they were also hit, assisted living facilities were hit, not, but they are different than nursing homes. They, you know, the nursing homes have the state reimbursements and really rely on that. Assisted living, a lot of them is private pay, so it did not, it doesn't suffer like the nursing homes suffer.
Okay. That, that's all I have, thank you. Thanks for the follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Questions from the board, Mr. Walsh?
Hello, Mr. Karen, how are you this evening? Thank you for your presentation. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Staying on the same theme, at least for right now, do you, when you do this, use primarily the sales approach or do you use an income and expense approach?
It's sales and income, but yeah, for commercial properties, you really, you're, you're looking at income because you don't have the sales data that you have for residential. So you're looking at both your income approach and you're looking at your sales approach and then matching the model, so all of that works together.
So for each property, each, let's just talk about commercial properties right now, you do both analysis for every property?
We do an analysis for the market. So, so let's say office buildings. We will look at all the office building sales and then we'll build a model for those office building sales. And we'll look at all the rents and the expenses and the cap rates and we'll develop individual values for each property using the income approach. And that's for income producing properties. Some properties that are smaller, office buildings that are purchased owner user, income approach is not that applicable, but for every income producing property, we develop an income approach for it.
Okay, and how do you take into account the differences between, say, like Class A office space and Class B office space and so on? Because obviously those rents and that income is completely different for each of those types of classifications.
Yeah, no, that's an excellent point. I talked a little bit about dividing the commercial market into different areas, office, retail, industrial, but within those areas, we divide them further. We divide office into Class A office, Class B, Class C. We look at the rents for all three of those segments. We have CoStar in our office, which is a service that the, all the commercial brokers use to market their properties for lease and for sale. So we have the vacancy and the offering rates and we get income expense information. So we see what all the Class As are, are offering their space at, what the Class Bs are offering their space at. And then even within those segments in the Class A, we'll say, all right, these are your best buildings, these are your second best buildings. And we'll make sure that the rates reflect that, that your Class B rates are lower than your Class A rates and your Class C rates are lower than your Class B and Class A.
So if you look at, if you're primarily using the income and expense approach, and we are, have a global pandemic that hits in March of 2020, and that income and expenses will not be known until this year's tax return. But you're doing your information based on October 1st, 2020. Isn't there like a lag we're missing? So many of these, I mean, I'm seeing more and more commercial spaces along Post Road pop up empty because they can't afford to be here anymore because of the shutdown. How are you taking that into account? Because if you're not getting that income and expense information lagged until the year's over, after your evaluation's done, it would appear to like someone, a layperson like myself, that you, there's a potential at least for you to overvalue the property because you're using the previous year's data.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good point. And one thing that Ross did when he sent out the income expense statement, usually they're doing the spray. What Ross did, he did two things. One is he let them until August do the INE statements. And the second, he put a supplement on the income and expense statement saying, if there's any impact to COVID to your property, please let us know about it and tell us what it is. So not only did we get the INEs for the actual year end prior, but we got their input from how COVID is impacting them through August of last year, which is just a month or so prior to the revow date. In addition to that, you know, we, we talked to investors and we see the current through CoStar. We see the current sales and we see the current listings, the current vacancy. So all of the vacancy and information is current that we have, together with what they provided us. So we took all of that into consideration and did, to the best of our ability, reflect COVID in these numbers that we're getting. Now, you know, nobody has a crystal ball and we didn't, you know, we, we don't know exactly how they're going to pull out of it, but we talked to a lot of investors and, you know, with some market segments, they were, they were saying we're devastated. With others, they were saying it's a bump in the road and as soon as, you know, we get over this hump, we're going to go right back, you know, to where we were before. So it depended on the market segment and we did take that into consideration.
Okay. And then some of the people were able to, the commercial properties were able to pay their rent because of the PPP loans. Because rent was a deductible expense in order to get forgiveness on that loan amount. So in essence, Congress had set up a, they wanted to kind of protect, I think, some of the commercial landowners to bring rent in by giving them funds, giving them these loans that if you paid your employees, paid your rent, you were able to get forgiveness on the amount. Now, they've just done another one, that's a little bit different, actually a decent amount different, actually. But when that runs out, where do you see that going? I mean, when that money runs out and people, if the economy doesn't return as quickly, it just seems to me that vacancy rates have a potential to skyrocket.
Yes, and it, and we did see a lot of the response that we got to Ross's supplemented INE statement. A lot of the responses were what you just said, that our tenant had PPP and they're paying and everything's, everything's okay for now. So that is true. As far as what's going to happen in the future, we're, we're putting ourselves on October 1st, 2020. What is, what is someone going to do as of that date? So that's all we know and that's, we tried the best to do. Going into the future, that's, you know, we could talk about that and where we are today. And I think, but it's, it's not, it's independent of the revow. But I think you're right, one of the, one of the market segments is the apartment market segment, the moratorium on evictions, right? A lot of the people have tenants in there who aren't paying, but they can't evict them. And once that ends, that's going to change that market. And once the PPP money runs out, you know, well, it will depend on if that market's back again, right? If the, if the bars are open and the money runs out, but they're back in business, then no harm, no foul. But some of these other businesses, there may be some long-term impacts.
Tell me about what you saw in doing the revaluation for commercial properties. Well, let's take Post Road, for example. What did you see for like retail stores, restaurants, things like that in regards to increases or decreases in the revaluation of these properties?
The portion of the Post Road that is really the pedestrian center you could think of, the Post Road, right? That, the land values went up, the values went up, may have to do with they were a little bit depressed before, but, but those went up on the, on the edges of the Post Road, they went up also, but not, not quite as much. And you didn't see really the, you know, if COVID hadn't hit, there would have been a pretty good appreciation. But because of COVID, I think that was all, you know, tamped down quite a bit.
Okay, because many of those properties have triple net leases where they'll be responsible for the landlord's increase in value. And speaking to a number of landlords there, they're just kind of surprised by where the values went, which in a way, they just pass them on to the, on to the tenant. And then if the tenant can't afford that increase, they'll close the store. And then the landlord will do that.
Yeah, and you, and you would think that, you know, since you're not responsible for the, the taxes as a landlord, why do you care? But they do care, which is the reason that you said, is that, you know, if their tenant goes out, that's a problem and now they have to get a new tenant and the taxes are, you know, are too high. So that's why, you know, we're careful to make the taxes fair for what the value of the property is. And if they have a, you know, specific question on a specific property, we have the Board of Assessment of Appeal process, we have the court process after that and we could work all that out.
Okay, but they don't have the right to appeal that on a yearly basis, right? So because then they have a right to appeal it every five years. So like next year, these landlords, can they come in and appeal again?
They, the Board of Assessment Appeals meets every year, so they could appeal and then they could appeal that. But if you appeal to Superior Court, you're, you're, you're done. Whatever they say goes for the five years. Ross, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, you can appeal every year to the BAA, provided the BAA didn't reduce you. So if you receive a reduction from the BAA and you don't go to Superior Court, you, you, you're stuck with that number for the revow period or until we make some other increase to the property, say for, for an addition or renovation or whatever that may be. But whenever they appeal within that five-year period, it would always come back to October 1 of 20. So even if they didn't appeal for the first three years and appealed four years from now, it would, we would still look back to October 1 of 20.
All right. So if vacancy rates continue to increase because the, say, the values have gone up and therefore, when you look at total rent, which includes taxes on these triple net leases, people don't want to afford them and vacancy rates go up, it still goes back to the October 1st, 20 pricing that you guys are established, that you guys have established in your revaluation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Which if PPP money drives up, drives up and people stop paying rent, it, it, you know, I'm just looking at it from a Board of Finance standpoint, like that could potentially be a huge problem for us. And when, I think the board's got to know that as we go forward. Where did you see it on Black Rock Turnpike? How did, how did, how did those same type of stores, retail, restaurants, not office building, but just that, that market up on Black Rock Turnpike too? Because it's in one of the other two major areas for our town in regards to commercial taxes.
Right, and that was, that would be the other area that did well, right? Black Rock Turnpike and the area, the pedestrian center of the Post Road are the two areas that did the best as far as retail is concerned. I mean, retail has some issues, you know, fighting online retailers, but if you're in a, you know, grocery anchored shopping center, if you're in a service business, you're doing well, right? You gotta, you gotta go get your groceries, you do that every week. So those, those tend to be doing well. If you're a department store, you're fighting Amazon, you're probably not doing that well. So those two areas did well. Black Rock held its own and the pedestrian center on the Post Road held its own.
Okay. But, but you see in the future with, you know, online purchases and things, that that's, retail's going to be a problem going forward?
I think, I think, you know, places like Kohl's, it was, you know, they were in a low market lease anyway, they, they were one out, but they're, they're the ones who are, the department stores are the ones who are really having problems competing against, you know, the Amazons of the world.
Okay. All right, there wasn't as much data in this packet towards the commercial side. Do you have any of the historical data for the commercial appeals that you're seeing compared to the previous years that are on page 20? That's only for residential. Do you have that for commercial?
I, I do not. I dug through, you know, I've only been here for three to four years and I, I don't have as detailed information on the commercial. I think it might be that prior BAAs chose not to hear commercial. They have the option to not hear anything over a million dollars that's a commercial property, so that may have been the reason we don't have BAA data on those properties.
All right. So you have the option of doing it if, or not doing it if it's over a million dollars, you say?
That's correct.
And how did you guys do it? You guys decided to take all of them or did you, did you decide not to take some of them?
This year, the BAA is carrying all, all appeals. They did not choose to opt out of the commercial.
And do you know the reasoning for that?
It's good to bring them in and, and hear what they have to say. Bring some information to the table so, you know, we can possibly take care of it now and save ourselves, save ourselves a Superior Court appeal.
Okay. I guess that makes sense. Can you talk, Mr. Karen, about the industrial now? We did, we, we just talked about, at least my questions are, were about commercial. Now I'm going to industrial. So could you talk to us about where that went and what you think the reasons were? Because if I'm not mistaken, didn't that go up like 36%, 36. something percent?
I don't recall how much industrial went up, but industrial's doing well. Industrial is, it's hard to do an industrial facility remotely. So they stayed open, they stayed in business, they stayed doing what they were doing. And industrial's always been doing well in Fairfield County. There's not a lot of industrial space. Further down county you go, the less industrial space there is because it always gets, you know, a higher and better use. They take down industrial to put up, you know, apartments or, or other types of uses. So industrial's always been pretty strong.
Pretty strong, 37% seems to be a pretty large increase. Did that surprise you?
No, I wasn't surprised by any, any of the increases.
Okay. How many commercial, how many industrial properties are there?
I don't have that information in front of me. We could certainly get that to you.
Mr. Murray, how many are there?
33.
33, and how many appealed?
I don't have the breakdown between commercial, industrial and the appeal. I'll have to, I'll have to do that. Let me look, I may have that, I may be able to do that. I'm not 100% sure, I got to check my, my BAA data. If you can, you can continue and I'll let you know if I...
Well, while you're at it, if you can tell me the number of commercial properties we have?
All commercial?
All commercial, yeah.
Yep, 685.
And the 159, 159 appeals, you said it's split between commercial and industrial, correct?
Yes.
I'm just trying to figure out what percentage of each category appealed. And you, you can't tell me, I guess, because you just don't have the data of what the difference is with prior years of the prior five years and the prior, prior five years before that, correct?
I, I don't have the data to do that.
All right. Mr. Murray, were you surprised by the number of commercial slash industrial appeals? Or you just don't have the data to be surprised by it? You just didn't know what you were going to get?
Well, that's, that's part of it, yeah. I don't have the data to, to, to know. But no, you know, typically the commercial people will appeal in the first year of the revow, knowing that they'll get the, the most benefit out of their, their expense if they have to go to Superior Court.
Okay. Because even if I add the 685 commercial to the 33 industrial, that's total of 718 properties and 159 appeals, it seems like a high ratio, but in your experience, what do you normally see? But in your experience, what do you normally see? And I know you've worked for other towns. Just seems like a high percentage of, percentage of people appealing.
Yeah, it, again, I don't have a basis to compare this to. Fairfield definitely has a higher appeal rate than other towns I've worked in. And this holds true for, say, last year, the 2019 grand list. My prior town, we were probably seeing 25 appeals towards the end of a revouch. Here, we had over, just over 100. So, you know, Fairfield just seems to be by nature a town that has, that appeals more.
Okay. Both residential, commercial, and industrial? All across the board? We're, we're just a very appealable town. Our population.
It looks that way.
Of all those level of people, business people, residential people, do you think it has anything to do with the levels of where the revaluation took the property for all those categories in general? Do you think it has anything to do with that?
Of course. When someone's value goes up, it's going to prompt them to, to scrutinize it and appeal it.
Okay. I presume those appeals are kind of expensive, right, on the commercial industrial, because most people are lawyered up? Are those the most expensive appeals?
Yes, yep.
Okay. I mean, Chris can probably tell you, because I believe, Chris, you've represented businesses on the other side at times? And the cost of the, of a commercial appraisal is quite a bit greater than that of a residential?
Yeah, the commercial appeals, the cost of the appraisals is greater. It's usually a more complicated case than a residential appeal. A lot of the appeals, just so you know, a lot of the people who come in for the informal hearings are tax reps. They take these on a contingency basis, and they, you know, I had one tax rep come in with almost 100 properties, you know, and just go one after one and just hope that they can get something off something. So not all of these are what I would expect, or, you know, owners who are unhappy with it, I think a lot of them are tax reps, and some attorneys will take, you know, a bunch of appeals for a bunch of property owners, which is fine. You have a couple of major property owners in town who, if they just appealed their properties, there would be quite a few of them in town. But that's, that's part of the process. And, you know, Ross is used to it, and I'm used to it. This is, this is basically what we do. And if they have information to bring, love to see it and make a change if it's necessary. And if they don't have any information, but they just want lower, you know, want lower taxes because they do, we say, bring us information. And I think that protects everyone in the town.
Mr. Murray, you, you talk to your cohorts in other towns, correct? About what they say?
Not as much as I used to.
Oh, really?
It's a little different, though, the past year. But yes.
Why is that? Because you're busy, or they won't talk to you?
It's, well, it's because we're busy and we're not have, you know, usually we meet up at the meetings. And of course, we've pretty much had no meetings in the last year.
Okay, I'm just curious. I think Westport's going through a revaluation right now. Have you had a chance to talk to your, your compadre?
Yeah, I've talked to Mr. Freya, but not, not in much detail.
Okay, so you don't know how we match up in regards to, you know, how values have gone up in all three categories, or number of appeals, or anything like that?
No. No, I haven't talked to him in a, in a couple of months.
Okay. All right, I have nothing more. I have more to do residential, okay. Yep?
I only see that we have maybe one industrial appeal.
Okay. One out of 33.
Right.
Okay. So that would make it kind of even more heavy as a percentage on, so really 158 appeals were filed on 685 properties, if I'm kind of looking at that, right?
Right, but there's only 33 industrials, so there's, that's a pretty small category.
Okay. So it's almost basically a third of the property, the, about a third of the commercial properties, then, 32.34% of the commercial properties have appealed. It just seems like a, quite a large amount of commercial appeals. But I, but I understand they've got tenants because it affects rent prices and all that other stuff. I have nothing further to ask right now on the commercial and industrial properties. I will have more to ask when we get back to residential. Thank you, Mr. Brown. I'll give it back to the board. I'm sorry to monopolize that, but I just wanted, there wasn't as much information in regards to commercial in the presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Waugh. And the Board of Assessment Appeals, right, there's a process, and people can follow that process, right, Mr. Ross? So that, that's, that's their job. So, Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris DeWitt. You know, I know one of the reasons that, you know, by charter, we asked for this briefing is for process, so I'd like to spend a couple of minutes on process, if I may. My first question, on, on slide three, talks about the changes. So it's an easy one, I'll just ask first. Added docks and added billboards. Am I to understand that we never added, if you, if you own a home with a dock into the lake or to the ocean, whatever like that, that that was never assessed before? Is, is that what that means?
They, they were not listed on the field card. The docks were not.
But, but they are now.
They are now.
And billboards, is it, is it safe to assume that if I'm a business and I have a billboard that's, that's right by I-95, that, that was not assessed up until this year?
They were, but we, we took it and made it consistent in how we're assessing all the billboards. Some of them were just added as a, as a fixture, like an outbuilding, you know, just an item. Whereas we looked at the income that they generate and what value that contributes to the property.
So that.
Because they are generating revenue from that in most cases.
So that sounds like a process improvement, so that, that sounds, that sounds really great to me. Mr. Fazio, I know you talked about the neighborhoods. You know, the map, the map, I appreciate the maps that are in here, but they're so tiny. But I just wanted a little more data on, especially when it says corrected parcels in incorrect neighborhoods. Can you explain what that, what that means?
So there was some.
That's simply a, you know, I went through and reviewed all the neighborhoods. This, this happened, you know, before municipal valuations took over. I went through all the neighborhoods and just looked for miscoding. It's just, you know, properties that were, were typographically in the wrong neighborhood. So you might have, you know, and I don't remember any particulars, but say you had a property in the beach that was coded as being in greenfield, and it was simply just a data entry error. But through using GIS, I was able to map the neighborhood and look for any of these anomalies and correct them. So our neighborhoods are now consistent, you know, I, I believe that we've corrected all the, all the errors in the coding side of it.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I don't need to direct the questions around, around the room here, so. But my last question to, through you, Mr. Chairman, to whomever, there were four new neighborhoods added. What, what does that affect, what is the effect of that? I mean, is that like taking, and I'll use Stratfield for, because I think Stratfield was one of the ones that got broken up? Was there a portion of Stratfield that was either under assessed or over assessed? Is that why that, those were broken up?
So I can answer that. So I, I think the reason that I broke Stratfield up is the values in North Stratfield were different than the values in what is known as Stratfield. But that was all called Stratfield. So I felt that there has to be some delineational difference between the two. And when we started examining sales, once I divided it, did see that there was a slight difference in land values between the two neighborhoods. So over time, I think the process has become better because there's been more separation between those two areas.
So I would agree, it certainly sounds like the process is better. And again, that's, that's one of the things that our board is supposed to look at. So is it safe to say, probably for Mr. Murray, that this new map is the standard map we're going to go forward with and when we have to do this again?
Yes, but it's, it's something that will, you know, it's evolving. These aren't fixed. You know, if we see changes in the next revouch, we'll make adjustments again.
Got it. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Just with residential, are there any questions? I just want to make sure, are there any further questions on commercial and industrial? Okay, so we're on residential now. Mr. DeWitt kind of took us there, but I wanted to make sure, just so we're not bouncing back and forth. So if there's no more questions on commercial, industrial, except for Mr. Ross has a comment, I guess, on commercial and industrial, go ahead.
Yeah, there was a question that was sent ahead of time about the commercial and how much was attributable, attributable to new construction versus how much was just value change over time? And unfortunately, we can't determine that number. And the reason is, when we're changing our pricing model, the 2019 model, where we started from, and we ended with the 2020. So we don't have a baseline number in the revouch for the new construction without it being improved. So there's no way for us to tell you what the change was based solely on construction. Did I make that clear enough? That's.
Well, I know who asked that question in advance, and if not, I'm sure they'll bring it up. But thank you. Thank you for, thank you for being proactive with that. So I will go to Ms. Charlton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Lori Charlton. I think this is a question for Mr. Murray, but I just want to circle back through the methodology in the presentation. On page five, can you help me understand the dates there? It says that we analyze all sales between October 2019 and October 2020. But then we say we developed the pricing model with sales from January 2019 through November 13, 2020. So what's the, what's the disparity between those two sets of dates? And how, how does that work?
Excuse me. Right, the, the October 19 to October 20 time period is what is required by the state when we send in our revaluation certification. They only allow us to use sales during that one-year period when we produce the ratios that we discussed. But as the model's being built, we will start with sales going much further back, and we will look at sales much, you know, past October 1st to validate the model and make sure it is working properly.
Okay, I think I understand what you said. So you're saying that the, the sales data between October 2019 and October 2020 is actually used to do the valuation, but the broader period is used to do the ratios that are testing the reasonableness of the data?
It's the other way around.
The other way around?
Right, the, the one-year period is used to validate the revaluation.
Got it, okay.
With, through the state.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that. My other question is on page 16, where we look at the appeals that were filed. So it says here, 263 assessments were changed, 766 remained unchanged. Is that number inclusive of appeals that are still being heard? Or, in other words, is the 263 going to, is the numerator and the denominator going to go up? Or what is, what does that mean? Is that just point in time data, or is that the final result?
You're, you're on page 16, correct?
Yes.
Right. That is the informal hearings that were held by municipal valuations. The BAA is the more formal hearing through the town. So there are two different sets of hearings.
Okay. So I guess, and the reason I'm asking is, that looks like a roughly 25% ratio of assessments that were changed based on the informal hearings. And, you know, is that normal? You know, what's, what's the typical, you know, level of change that, that one would expect? And maybe that question goes to Mr. Fazio. Hi, Mike. But, you know, what, how do we interpret that number? And what does that mean, if anything, about kind of accuracy overall?
So a lot of those changes are made because people bring information in about their property. They might bring pictures in to say, listen, I don't have a garage, that you have said I have a garage, or the condition of a property, or they had wetlands that nobody knew about, or any physical characteristic that need to be adjusted. There's a lot of changes made for that fact. A lot of other changes are being made. When I do, I personally viewed a lot of the changes that had to be made. So when I did my research further, I went to look at a specific house, because it was, this is, as you know, was a statistical evaluation. We didn't look at, inspect all the houses that didn't sell. So now I'm looking at the individual house and looking at the grade and the condition to see if something was inaccurate in the CAMIS system that needed to be adjusted. Once we found a change that needed to be made, I made the change and marked the record card to say that this was viewed and a change was made on this property. So if anyone went back from the BAA or in the public, they could see this card was changed at the time of an informal meeting for a specific reason.
Okay, so that, this includes, you know, maybe a variety of things, but largely it sounds like the field card wasn't right, or, you know, something of that nature?
Right, and there's a lot of times the grade might not be correct on the property or a condition that might not be correct on the property. When you investigated that specific house because somebody came in, you were able to go take a look at a picture of it or use, you know, a lot of times we'll use Google or any information that's available on the internet, or if it was ever listed at some point. So I'm looking at an individual house rather than this being a massive, a mass appraisal, which a model is applied to all the homes. So you were able to find, you know, if a condition needed to be changed or a grade needed to be changed. And at that point, we would make those changes. Sometimes, for example, they might have, we said they had five bedrooms, they really only had three bedrooms, or they had an appraisal done on it recently for financing. I would examine the appraisal to see if it was credible and if it had good props in it. Or a lot of times, people just brought in additional information that, you know, it wasn't caught in the model. The model is not 100% perfect. You know, there is a variation in valuation because it is on a mass basis. And tweaks need to be made to individual characteristics of property. Even a lot is oddly shaped, or it's got ledge, or it's, the topography is bad. Those are the adjustments that are being made to the field card. We're really not changing the model that got applied to the entire municipality. We're just changing physical characteristics of that individual property.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for that. And I think that's an important point, that this is not, you know, this, this level of changes is not reflective of the model itself, but more of changes to individual properties that were identified. but more of changes to individual properties that were identified when, you know, when they were brought to your attention. And there may have been characteristics around, on the property that weren't reflected in the original data set that you looked at.
Exactly.
Thank you. All right. And my next question, and Mr. Murray, that was me. I wanted to know, and I, not, not crazy about the answer. I think it's really, really important for us to understand, at least at some kind of macro level. We've got a four and a half percent increase in the grand list. And just, just from looking at the budget numbers, it feels like that is primarily increased assessments on properties versus real growth. And the reason I say that is just because, you know, the ratio of spending and mil rate and where everything comes out. I wasn't asking that question as it related to only commercial properties. What I'm trying to understand is, you know, what, how much of that four and a half percent is actually real growth? In prior years, we've been able to understand that because that's really all that's in the change is real growth. I think last year it was 1%. So, you know, what can you tell us about that? And, you know, do you even have a gut feel? Did COVID slow things down? Did it create more? Like what, you know, how, how are we supposed to interpret that?
If I can comment on COVID slowing things down. It did for maybe a couple of months. And then, you know, permit wise, it came, it came back strong. I, I can probably get you some permit data on, on residential, on the residential side. And we can look at that. But historically, over the past several years, we're really looking at about a three-quarter percent growth typically in new construction or construction activities. That's kind of what we've seen, and I don't think that would be much different for this year.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful because again, when we think about, you know, how this all ties into our budget, you know, those increases in assessments on existing properties, those are just straight up, that translates into straight up tax increases on homeowners versus having a bigger base, obviously, of, of property that we are assessing. So if you think it's, it's roughly the same as prior years and it's, you know, three-quarters of a percent, that's, that's helpful. But if there's any other information you could provide on that, I, I think it's a pretty important point. And my last question, I, a follow-up to something Mr. Walsh asked, because I, I didn't know this, but you said, I think, that people can appeal every year? Does that, so if someone, what, how exactly does that work? If someone, let's say, missed the appeal period, they forgot to get their appeal in and they missed the window, does that mean they can go back next year within a certain time window and have it looked at retroactively? How, how does all that work?
Right, the, you can, you can appeal to the BAA every year. And it's the, it's the same timeframe. It's before, on or before February 20th each year. It is not retroactive. So if you miss this year, you cannot appeal the 20 grand list. You can appeal next year the 21. So you would, if you had a reduction in 21, it would be good for the remainder of the revale period for four years versus five. So you can't come in at the end of the revale period and have a retroactive adjustment back to the beginning. But you do have the opportunity to appeal every year.
Got it. And that applies even in, in a situation where someone might, for example, find an error in their, like say the, you know, square footage on the house was wrong or something like that. It does, no matter the reason, it's, it's prospective, but it can be done every year.
Right, there's, there's a very narrow ability for us to go back and that's limited to three years for any sort of clerical error. And clerical error is, has been adjudicated, so it's pretty well defined. It's not an error of judgment. So if I believe the house is 1,500 square feet and it's actually 1,400, that's not considered clerical, that's considered an error of judgment. But yes, there, there's, like I said, there's a very narrow opportunity for us to go back, most often not.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Ms. Marmian and then Mr. Matola.
Thank you. I just want to go back to Ms. Charlton. She had asked about the, the difference between the dates of sales that you analyze and then the dates that you use to create the pricing model. Can you just, is that typically what happens in a, in a, during a revale? That you create, you look at both sales and then you create a model using a longer time period? Is that typical?
Normally, you, you would start working on the pricing model, say, you know, late spring, early summer. So you won't even have all the sales in before you have to start building that model. So yes, you do start early. The, the methodology that we use is very widely used throughout the country and throughout the world. The mass appraisal technique is, is pretty well developed at this point. The software we use is, is used in other states and many, most of Connecticut. So it is a, it is a well-defined methodology.
And this is what we've done in past revales in Fairfield? Five years ago, we did something similar?
Yep, mass appraisal's been in use since, I think, the 30s or 40s. And I don't know how long it's been in Fairfield, but it's probably well over 50 years.
Okay, so, so anybody who's preparing an appeal, for example, is, if they're going through an attorney or they're going to understand that process? That's my question, that there's been some, some, we've gotten an email, for example, where people are saying, you know, you're changing the rules on us a little bit.
Ms. Marmian, hold on. Ms. Marmian, we got to be careful because that's, they take that to the BAA and that's not us. And we, we need to be careful with questions like that.
All right, I thank you for that. Then my other question is more from a legal fee standpoint. Do we know where the town is in terms of some of these appeals with legal fees? And if we're tracking according to what we budgeted for this, from an attorney's standpoint? Maybe Mr. Baldwin, if he was on the phone earlier.
I mean, that's, yeah, I, I can tell you where we are now. And Mr. Baldwin may be able to add something to this, but I, I don't, I don't think there has been a, a lot in terms of legal fees spent on appeals at this time. We have put more into the budget for, for next year, added more to the budget for next year to deal with appeals and courts, court case and settlements. Right now, the budget for our legal fees is tracking with what was budgeted. So the amount that has, the actual amount that has been spent this year to date or as of the end of the second quarter is on track with what we had budgeted for this year.
Hi, this is, this is Jim Baldwin here. I don't really have much to add to that, but certainly the, the costs associated with this are going to be seen more in the future and not right now, but so far we are tracking. But there are no, no real fees seen associated with this revale just because of where we are in the process.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Marmian. Mr. Ross, you had a follow-up?
I'll just add, the, the, the whole process is for, during a revale, we do the informal hearings. Those typically occur in December and sometimes into January. The grand list is finalized at the end of January. The BA process, they have to have their appeal in prior to February 20th. And then the hearings on the BAA and the deliberations happen typically in March. Once they, once a decision's been reached, they have two, the appellant has two months to appeal to Superior Court. So that's when we would start seeing legal fees, is once the, the appeals hit Superior Court.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ross. I want to go to Mr. Matola first and then Mr. Testani.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. John Matola here. I'm probably going to inartfully phrase this question, so, so bear with me. So if, if a homeowner wants an informal hearing and actually has one, and maybe Mike, you can answer this question. I don't care who answers it. And you go after the home and you see an issue that may affect the value of the property and you make an adjustment through that informal hearing. If that, if that same issue was applicable to, let's say, that neighborhood and, but the, but the neighbors never brought an informal, asked for an informal hearing, would you make any adjustments to those neighborhood homes?
Yes.
Follow what I'm saying?
Yes, and that was the case. So for example, if I had a condo come in and there was a informal hearing and I found that that style of unit was improperly valued, I would change all those units.
Okay.
Same holding true if I found a neighborhood that needed to be adjusted or a specific item that applied to multiple properties, we would make adjustments for, for that.
Okay, and that's standard operating procedure in your profession to do that?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's all I had. Thank you for answering that question.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Mr. Testani?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Jack Testani. Hey, Ross, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good, I just want to follow up on a previous question on appeals that do go to the Superior Court. Is there any history? Maybe, let's say, within the last 10 years of appeals that were forwarded to Superior Court? And I think it was also alluded to what it may have cost from a legal perspective. I just want to get an idea of if that's been a concern in the past. Thank you.
You know, Jared and I worked on some, some data from the 2010. I, I don't have a lot of deep historical data on it, but we did have, we did look at the 2010, which was a, a, a time of heavy appeals also. And we use that as a basis. I think I'll let Jared speak more to what, what we finally came up with.
Mr. Testani, could you repeat your question?
I just wanted to get a sense, Jared, how are you tonight?
I'm great, thanks. How are you?
Good, good. Just how much it may have cost the town in the past, depending upon how many appeals actually got heard at the Superior Court level. I know we talked about where it goes beyond the BAA, they have the two months. I just wanted to get a sense of, you know, has that been an issue in the past? What it may have caused the town? Wanted to get some idea.
Gotcha.
It's something, didn't sound like it would be something we should be too concerned about, but I wanted to get maybe more clarification on that.
Thank you.
Sure. As Ross mentioned, that the time period or the last revale that we looked at that was closest in terms of volume to what we're seeing this year from last year's revale was 2010. And there was, for court cases, it, from what we can tell, there was about $88 million in assessed value at the time. So that would be, that would have been the adjustment, that would have been the adjustment made at, at the time. So after the, after the grand list is set, you know, there are a couple of things that happened that affect the budget. And one of them is the Board of Assessment and Appeals and that process and the adjustments that come out of there. And then the second one, what to your question is, has to do with beyond that, what happens in the court process and the court proceedings? And so what we saw in 2010 was about $88 million in assessed value that was changed. And that plays out over a period of multiple years. It was approximately $9.7 million that affected the next fiscal year. So if the, when the revale happened in 2010, the, the next fiscal year would be the fiscal year 12. And the effect on that fiscal year was about $9.7 million in value.
And that, and I'm sorry, Jared, that was just from the BAA adjusted? Is that, did I hear you right?
The 9.7 would be from the court.
Okay.
Court settlements.
Do you know how many cases that consisted of approximately?
That was, let's see, 58.
Get that?
So it, it was a mix, would it be fair to say it was a mix of residential, industrial and commercial appraisals that went to that appeal process, went to the Superior Court and had those kinds of dollars assigned to it? Those 58 cases were a mixture of, is that fair to say? Or was it all residential?
No, it was a, it was a combination. I don't know the exact distribution between those two, but it was a combination of both.
Okay, all right, that was just curious. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. Mr. Murray, just a question. Are there generally less appeals with a full revale?
I haven't, I, I don't, I, I don't think I can answer that. I don't think I have enough, I've been through enough of both in the same town to be able to tell you that.
Okay.
Mike, I don't know, can you?
I think what drives appeals from our experience over the 30 years of doing tax appeals for, for and against municipalities is the changing real estate market. If you have an increasing market or you have a decreasing market, you'll see more appeals than if you have a market that's flat at the time of the revale. Because people don't expect those larger swings going up or they want to see a less of a swing going up and more of a swing going down in down markets. But when the market is kind of stagnant, like it was in 2015, you don't see as many appeals because the real estate market isn't really changing much.
All right, thank you. Ms. Charlton?
Thank you, Mr. Brun. I'm not sure who to direct this to, I guess, Mr. Murray. But we, and I apologize if this was asked because there were a bunch of detailed questions asked about this, but, but big picture, the level of appeals that are in process, what does that look like compared to, you know, if, if there's a normal or, or, you know, what, what does that look like? And, you know, is it telling us anything about the, you know, because again, we're, we're here to talk process, right? So does that, does that tell us anything about the, the revale as a whole?
I, I wouldn't equate number of appeals to necessarily the quality or the, you know, how the results. But if you look at slide 16, I'm sorry, slide 20, you can see the historic data going back to 2001 on the number of residential appeals. And, you know, of those five years, this is the second lowest.
Got it. Okay, so that's the, so that, this, what's on here, and thank you for pointing that out. So this is obviously not the outcome of appeals, but it's the, this is the gross number, because the appeal process was cut off. So this is the full number we know at this point and it's kind of in range for Fairfield.
Right.
Okay, and I, and I just.
Looking back at these results, you know, I'm not surprised at the number of appeals that we have.
Got it. And I, I should point out, I appreciate what Mr. Fazio said because I, I think that makes a lot of sense. If, you know, your valuation is going up, you're more likely to appeal. And, and, you know, it makes, makes a lot of sense to me that, that these numbers are tied to market changes, as anything else. But, you know, when I looked at this, I, it was, you know, I see the numbers. I guess at, at some point we'll know the outcome, which is also, I think. I think, relevant, but we don't know that at this point, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Charlton. Okay, we're doing, we're doing well, we're not asking questions that should go before the BAA, and we just want to keep on track with that. So are there any further questions on residential? Mr. Walsh?
Okay, Mr. Murray, these are some of the questions, I'm going to start with some of the questions I was going to ask you during your presentation, but Mr. Brown preferred that I do at the end, so I apologize for bringing you back through it, again, but I'm going to start on page six. So, I understand there's a development of a pricing model, as Mr. Fazio explained. Explain to me what that pricing model looks like, are these like individual assumptions per neighborhood? Street by street, how does that work? Ms. Fazio, you're welcome to answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, Mike probably will have a better handle on it, but it is, it looks at the various characteristics of the property, and how we have it coded, and there's values or factors or depreciation assigned to these, and the model will produce the result, so different neighborhoods have different base values, different styles of homes will have different base values, and it goes from there, you know, the base value will interact with the grade and the depreciation on the house to produce the result.
Okay. And Mr. Fazio-
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
So I think Ross covered it pretty well, it's really a buildup model, so you come up with the land value, and the land value is derived for the separate neighborhoods, and then adjusted for different land characteristics, like I was talking about before, it might be an odd shaped lot, it might have wetlands, it might not all be usable, the geography might be bad, it might be located next to the I-95, all those factors, or if it's located has positive influence, it might be located on South Port Harbor or Fairfield Beach with views of the water, so those are all different characteristics where the land value is created. To that value is added the building values, and the building value is derived by the style of the home, the grade, and the grade is really the fit and finish of the home, if it's a custom home versus a spec home, or a home that was built in the 70s versus a home that was built in 2021, those grades might be quite different, and so that drives the value of the cost per square foot of that style home. Once we come up with the cost new, we have to depreciate that value based on the condition of the property and the age of the property, and these depreciation tables are set, and the number, or the new number, the construction new cost is then depreciated back to reflect the age of the house, or the effective age of the house and condition of it. The improvement values are then added to the land value, which gives an overall value. Now you have some other values included in there, for example, if you have outbuildings, pools, or decks, or patios, or outdoor kitchens, all those items are just added on, so it looks at the different characteristics, if you have a brick house versus a wood frame house, if you have five bathrooms versus three bathrooms, two car garage versus one car garage, or no car garage, each characteristic has an assigned value to it, and it builds up that value for that particular piece of property, and that's how the model works.
Okay, and all of that is-
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Murray.
All of that is, you know, tested against the ratios, so we will, as we said earlier, we'll cut the, you know, cut the properties, we'll look at Colonials, we'll look at particular neighborhoods, and make sure that the model is producing the accurate results based on the statistics we're at, we need to meet.
And how do you change that, so each one of those factors that Mr. Fazio just mentioned, each one of them has to individually be adjusted slightly in order to meet your ratio, so, like, whether it's made out of brick, or whether it's stone, stick built, things that he just spoke about, you go in and then look at each individual factor and adjust them?
Those construction costs are set in the model prior to starting the job, and physical characteristics, the items that are adjusted based on the market condition is the depreciation factor.
Okay, so after you, and then, you know, I was, go ahead, Mr. Murray, I want you guys to finish before I ask questions.
Yep, well, I think I'll make a point, and this ties back into a little bit about what Ms. Marmian asked, it's important that when you're, you know, understanding the model is one thing, but what really matters is the result, and is that producing a good value? So when somebody's appealing, they need to appeal the value, not whether, you know, this factor is they agree with, or that factor, it's about the final value, and that's what needs to be appealed, because when you go to Superior Court, it's going to be about the value, they're not going to really look at the individual components of a model.
But what you, what the model says on this computer basis, you take this model, and then you compare it against this house's almost field card characteristics, and that pops out a value for that specific property, that's how you determine it, what the value is. Mr. Fazio spends a lot of time doing his, trying to correct, make his model, and then from there, he does statistical analysis to make sure that that model seems to be working with what market data is saying, right? That's what I've heard tonight.
Yes.
Yeah, correct? That's the process, so at a certain point, you finish what the model is, and then you have all the statistical stuff for each individual property in town, and it probably goes through a computer in about 10 seconds for every property in town, and compares his model to that, those characteristics that are also computerized, and that generates the value, correct?
For more or less.
More or less, okay, and, and, Mr. Fazio, I listened to your presentation, and the first elected woman was very gracious, and good enough to hold a Zoom meeting that both of you participated in, that I listened on for, I think it was the beach area one that I listened to, because there was a lot of concern, consternation, confusion, and wanted to be able to ask questions, and you gentlemen participated in that, and I think, Mr. Fazio, at one point you stated, like, one of the factors you talked about, I think Roland Road, and how every street from the beach changes a value of some sort, because, I think it's logical, the closer you beach you are, the more valuable people, you know, the public is paying more money for the closer properties to the beach, and if you're seven streets or seven blocks away up Roland Road, or however many there are, all the way up to the old Post Road, it's less valuable, you were explaining, and that seemed to make sense, correct?
Right.
That's one of the examples you used, okay.
Which wasn't the case before, all of the beach area was valued the same, that's why we broke those delineations up.
Yeah, I think you used the example that in the previous revaluation five years ago, for some reason, one side of Roland Road was valued a lot higher than the opposite side of Roland Road, correct?
What I was saying is, if you were located one block from the, one or two houses removed from the beach, your value was the same as if you were all the way close to Post Road.
Yeah, and I'm just, and I'm not trying, I don't want to really talk about a specific property, I was just trying to show you how you model stuff, and the examples you were giving during that Zoom call, correct?
Yes.
That's what, okay, so now you, you have your model, you've done your statistical analysis, and that becomes the model for the town, correct?
Yes.
Yep, why can't that model become public? Because I think there's a lot of taxpayers who wanted to know, like, what is the value of that? So, and I think a lot of questions were asked that night on why, whether you'd make it public, and there was talk about information being made public, but I don't know if it ever was, but why, why can't the taxpayers who pay for that model see it?
They could see it, the tables are available, it's just for somebody to explain how their individual property, the model is reflecting in that, would be very difficult, because it's an algorithm, now, you could print out a specific card that shows how the model is calculating your individual property.
Yes, yes.
But that's not part of the field card, that's something above and beyond, but it is available if somebody wanted to see that.
Okay, can that be made, be put on our website?
I don't think that characteristic of the computer system has that.
19,000 of those, 19,001. I don't believe that that particular report can be printed on a mass scale, it's not meant for that, it's meant really, you know, when you're, when you're looking at a particular property, you can see that, but I don't, I don't believe that's possible to print for all properties. Well, I'm not asking for it to be printed, I want to ask the board to be available electronically, and be able to be, you know, because I think some people may get information where it would make it easier for them to decide whether they wanted to appeal or not appeal, it might take away a lot of the appeals, if you, if you were able to see, like, how you were able to do this, I think what's happening-
I don't think, I don't really think that would. I don't think that would take away the appeals, because I conducted the majority of the appeals in the beach area myself, and I reviewed the data supplied, and out of all the people who came in in the beach, very few people had evidence of the value being wrong, the majority of the complaints was the amount of increase the beach went up versus other areas of town, and that their taxes are going to go up more. Very few people came in with comps saying that, alright, here's four comps or three comps for my individual property, and this is why the value is wrong, I think I only reviewed several appraisal reports that were sent in with valuations on specific properties, but the majority of the informal hearings that I conducted on the beach area, which was, I reviewed all of them at the end, had information that showed comparables and how the value was wrong, you know, you had a lot of people coming in saying that the lots cross the way from the creek side versus the beach side, where they didn't understand how that went up a few thousand dollars, but there was no evidence ever given to me to show to the contrary, it was just statements a lot of times.
Okay, it just is, it just appears to me personally that if people want to see what the model is, it's been paid for by the taxpayers, people should be able to look at it, I don't think there's anything that we should, we should be just transparent about it, that's what I'm trying to say.
Wait a second, wait, Mr. Walsh, again, I want to be careful that the public doesn't think we're questioning the model, the model's been certified by the state, correct?
Mr. Brown, I did not say one thing about whether, I'm going under that the model's perfectly correct, what I'm saying is that it should be able to be seen, I'm not saying anything about any specific property, I'm not saying that I have any distrust of the model, I have to take it that this model's completely accurate, all I'm asking is the question about the model itself, and can people see it? That's all I'm saying, I'm not challenging at all, and I've not said that one time.
Okay, I'm just, when we use the word transparency, I just want to make sure that we're not assuming that this process isn't transparent, that's the word I was focusing on.
Okay, what I'm, what I'm trying to ask is why, and I think this board's going to have to take a more active role, I think, the next time, in our role pursuant to the charter, in asking more questions in regards to the process and what we're purchasing.
I agree with that, when that comes up again.
And it should be done four to six months prior to a request for proposals, so that everybody knows what we're seeking.
I agree with you.
Because the Board of Finance has a role in it, we weren't able to participate in that, we've talked about that a year ago, because of some mishap, but we didn't have that full role this time, but I'm saying, I'm more raising it for the next time, that I think we need to fully discuss it, and have people like Mr. Fazio come before us and Mr. Murray, and see, you know, lessons learned, things like that, and whatever, but one of them is this model, and I'm not saying, I'll say that I have the presumption this model's 100% correct, but it doesn't mean that people shouldn't be able to see it, that's my, that's my point.
Okay, thank you, and I'll come back to you, but Mr. Murray has a follow-up.
Sure. Yeah, we've, we've said all along that once the revaluation manual is turned over to the town, we will make that public, so once the evaluation complete, the manual, it will be made public.
Why can't it be made-
And that will have all the, that will have all the tables and all the data in it.
Okay, and why can't that be made public before then, is there a reason?
So, in order to produce the final manual, we need to get additional data, which includes the amount of appeals from informal hearings, how many people appealed to the BAA to finalize the manual, the tables that are in the CAMA system are available, and that's what the model was created on.
Yeah, I guess, I guess once the, you know, I guess, and I might be beating a dead horse here, because you understand what I'm saying, I'm not asking for it to be done after the appeal process, I'm wondering whether the model itself can be made public prior to that, like, it'd be ready to go when people got their, their appeal letters, so if they wanted to see, you know, what the, all the different things that went into the valuation their process pursuant to the model, they could see it. That's my point, and it wasn't done here, I think that we need to talk about it prior to a request for proposals being brought up, so, Mr. Murray, if you're still here, if you can make note of that, that we're going to want to start talking, Mr. Brown, I'm going to ask that it be, at least be talked about four months before an RFP is proposed, that we approved the funding for.
Okay.
About what we're going to want.
I'm in agreement with that, that's what, that's part of the charter, and that's part of the charter, so I'm in agreement with that, and Mr. Baldwin would like to speak at this moment, Mr. Baldwin, turning it over to you.
Yes, thank you, I just want to reiterate what both you and Mr. Walsh said, that that is absolutely within the purview of this board, that is, to look at the system that's going to be used for the next valuation, but that time has, as everybody here recognizes, has passed, and I just want to point out the fact that, as Mr. Murray and Mr. Fazio both stated very clearly, that at this stage, in the appeal process, it is not the model which is being appealed or questioned, it can't be, what is at issue in all appeals is the propriety of the valuation given to each particular property, so, so I think we're talking apples and oranges in that sense, insofar as the model is there to come up with the appraisal, and then the system is in place for questioning whether that model was accurate, not whether, for that particular property, that is, that the question is the valuation and not the model, so I think that that's, that's a non-issue at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Mr. Walsh, you were-
I have more questions here. So this informal hearing process or, or is that what you called it, Mr. Fazio, Mr. Murray? Where you could, you could request whatever. Is that, is that new, a new process for this town?
No, that process is used throughout the state.
Procedure when, uh, when going through a revaluation.
Okay. Okay. I think, um, Mr. Fazio, when you did that process, did your company contract with a, um, an outside vendor to like take the calls and stuff like that?
No, we took the calls ourselves.
Okay. You know, because I think when I was listening to that Zoom call, there seemed to be a lot of confusion because the person who would answer the phone said that they weren't qualified. But I guess they were just answering phone calls, basically taking messages for you. Is that correct?
No, the process of making an informal hearing was, there was multiple ways. Uh, either the formal hearing could have been made online. Uh, but if people didn't understand or didn't have a computer on how to make your appointment online, we had a call in number where we had, uh, people who were working the office answering the telephone to make appointments. Um, once the appointment was made, that point, uh, you, because typically the way in non-COVID times, you would have a meeting at the town hall where people would bring the information in and meet with one of the hearing officers. Due to COVID, it had to be done on the telephone. And the way that we completed these hearings on the telephone is someone had a phone call time slot with a phone number, we would call them. And at that point, they would give the information to a hearing officer. The hearing officer is just there to take notes and to take the information in. This is on the residential. All the commercial Chris Karen did himself, so he spoke to the people himself. But because there's, you know, a lot of residential, I physically couldn't answer the telephone for every single person. All that information is then compiled and then I would take a look at it and decide whether there was enough information, make a change or not make a change. Change was warranted, change was made, change wasn't warranted, we didn't make a change. And that's, that, that was the process. But everybody who was involved in the process from making the appointments, being the hearing officers who making the valuation changes or not changes were employees of municipal valuation services. We didn't have any outside contractor.
Okay. Was the hearing officer somebody who was trained in doing this? Or was it somebody that just took down the information, you mentioned that a couple of minutes ago, that took down the information and brought it to you?
So all our hearing officers have been doing this for many years. Uh, they were, they're actually the people who are out in the field doing data collection for us a lot of times. Uh, so they're familiar with the town. They were out there taking all the pictures because part of the contract was the town was refotographed. If it was a full measure and list revaluation, they would have been the people who were visiting the homes. So they're involved in the process. All the valuation decisions are only made by Chris or myself.
Okay. Um, and then did, you know, I know you set a date, time limit to do that and, um, you extended it. Or, I mean, maybe with, did you constantly, it was your consultation with the first select woman? I, I know there was a lot, you've got a lot. You, did you get more than you expected?
Uh, I, I think that we expected, uh, the volume that we received historically, Fairfield has a lot of appeals. I've lived here my entire life and, uh, there's, every year there's, it's the same. Uh, every revale, there's a lot of appeals, informal appeals. So we kind of expected the amount of appeals that we are, and plus we were in a rising market. That also is a trigger for a lot of appeals. Uh, so the expectation was, um, the same as what we expected. Uh, we did extend them because in the beginning, a lot of the appointments were close to the holidays. People were away or they didn't make it in time and they were calling during the holiday season and they were, so we felt that we would open up more time after the holidays to accommodate, uh, the, uh, property owners within the municipality.
Okay. And getting back to the homeowner about where they stood with that, did that take extra time than normal? Because I know, talked to the first select woman, she said she was getting a lot of calls about it. She said she had to speak. She called you. She was good enough to intervene and, and, and got everybody's thing because obviously February 19th was coming, um, for the appeal. Correct? So was it just a, a lot of work? Is that why it was not, you know, people weren't finding, some people weren't being notified until February?
Well, I, I don't understand the question notified on, all the informal hearing change notices went out the last week of January. So, and they were published on the website that Friday that they went out. Um, so the information was available. If the mail was slow for a particular person or the notice got lost, they were all mailed at the same time. And I, I have the exact date at the office. It was sometime the last week of, uh, January. So.
Okay. Getting back to the, um, number of appeals. So you went over what those numbers were. But I looked up what Westport's appeal number was. I think it's 59 residential appeals. Um, they have less than, slightly less than half the number of properties. But if you equalize them, which I did, out of our 400 and, what was it, 62 appeals from residential? Uh, four, 400 and, was it 430 or what was the number of appeals for residential?
430.
430. And if I, if I took the number of houses Fairfield has residential versus Westport, their number would have been annualized if we, to compare apples to apples, like 120. It just seems like a drastic number of differences. I mean, is, is it all based on the fact that Fairfield appeals more?
Oh, I, I.
What's the historic appeals for Westport?
I, I, I haven't gotten those. I could, I guess I could ask. It just seems as though, you know, the tide's all raising at the same time and it lowers at the same time too. So, you know, Westport's prices are going up and Fairfield's properties are going up. And I don't know what the, what their analysis on that was, but, you know, they're, they're in the same kind of market we are. Um, and it just seems like a lot less appeals. And I just wanted to know, um, both of your gentlemen's expert opinions, if you know why, what the reason for that dramatic difference would be, just on residential only.
I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not familiar with Westport's history on appeals. And I haven't spoken that, um, that deeply with, uh, their assessor.
Okay. Mr. Fazio, do you have an opinion on it?
I, I really don't have an opinion. I, I, how many parcels are in, I don't even know how many parcels are in Westport versus Fairfield.
Under 20,000, I believe.
Parcels in Westport? It can't be.
No, no, I'm sorry. It's 10,000, it's around 10,500 residential parcels. Sorry, 10,500 residential parcels.
I, I don't know why there's be less appeals in Westport versus Fairfield.
Okay. All right. And then, Mr. Murray, getting back to your presentation, the questions I was trying to get answered, because I just didn't understand all of them when you talk about, um, I'll get to the page. Page like seven. Can you just quickly go through these different four primary measurements? Because I, I just want to make sure I fully understand them. So if we take sales ratio, it's the sales price of a, of, what, what the sales price of what divided by the new value?
The sales price of a property divided by the value that's being produced by the, by the valuation, our new value.
Are you, are you saying the sales price of the data that you collected for the previous year that you talked about when you looked at individual sales? Is that the sales price that you're looking at?
It's an individual sale. So if, if a property sold for 500,000, that's the sales price. And if our value was 500, we would divide one into the other and come up with 100, 100%. We'd be perfectly on.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand.
Property by property.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask each one of these. I just want to make sure I understand the process. And then the coefficient of dispersion, dispersion, it's a measure of uniformity of sales ratio. Explain that, I mean, in greater detail. I, I just don't know what you mean by that.
I'll do my best. Um, it's a measure of your.
Understand what you said.
It's a measure of the, yeah, it's a measure of the distribution of the sales ratios and how tightly they are to 100, to being perfect.
Okay.
So if you think about your, 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 your bell curve distribution.
Yep.
So, you know, it's how close are your, is your population to the center and how, or how spread out it is. So as you get to a higher percentage, your distribution is spread out, which is telling you that your model isn't working as well. As it tightens up, it tells you that it's working better.
Understood. Thank you for that explanation. And then the price related differential, what is that? Explain that a little better. You've been doing a good job so far.
Okay. Um, this is, it's a measure of the uniformity of the values between, between values. So it tell, it tells you how well you're doing on lower valued properties versus higher valued properties. So it looks at those sales ratios as property value changes. So it tells you whether you're skewed to the high side or the low side.
Okay.
How'd I do?
And on that, you're trying to get between 98 to 103%. So you're trying to keep it kind of tight too? Because you're trying to keep your, that, that number tight between 98 and 103%?
Yes, it's 98 to 103 is, is the, is the, uh, the standard and we were at 101.
Okay. And then the last one is the unsold ratio. What is that?
Yeah, I'm going to defer and see if Mike can do that one. That one, um, I'm not as good at explaining.
Okay.
So the, the unsold ratio is if the population of the sales increased 5%, you apply the model to the non-saled properties and you want to see what the increase in value of that population is. So if the increase in value of that population is 5%, then you're at a one. If that increases five and a half percent, then your ratio might be a little bit more than one.
Okay.
Increases a little less, like four and a half percent versus the 5% population of the sales, then you're at smaller or maybe a 0.99%. So it's the relationship of the, the sales group versus the non-sales group, the increase.
All right. Can you explain, um, and, and I, and I, I heard what you said during that Zoom call and I guess it made sense, but I have a couple of questions. But just, and I, and I, I, I just want to understand, because a lot of people had questions about it, as you know, you gentlemen know during that call, of why we couldn't, um, put the re, and I know it's too late. We're, I am, you know, you know, I, I know it's too late. We're, we're in the process. But why we could not have put the revaluation off because of COVID? So you had some good explanations that I just want to, can you explain that to our board? So we fully understand. And then I have some questions for you.
Yeah, it's statutory for one that the, you have to do the revale. And my understanding of the, of the process to postpone it is, uh, you have to go to OPM to have that done. I'm familiar with Hamden and I know Hamden tried to extend theirs this past summer. And, um, their method was to go to the legislation, go to the legislature and try to have the legislature pass special legislation allowing them to extend. They could not get that done and it had to, you know, start the revale, I believe it was in June or July.
All right.
So, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not brushed up on the, the statutes on that, but.
Okay.
My understanding is it's not an easy process.
Are both, are either one?
Sorry. If you do extend, you still have to revale again in four years. So you don't, you don't get to go for five years. Now you're only going for four.
All right. Um, are you both aware that Greenwich and Trumbull are, were supposed to revale this year? But are, are extending it by a year? And that OPM has indicated that they are going to approve their extensions?
I didn't know Trumbull was, um, not revalling until, I don't know, February?
February of what, this year?
This year, February of this year.
So how long is that an extension of? Just basically from December or when, or, or do they?
I told, I was not aware that they were extending it until February this year. That's when I found, realized that they didn't revalue.
Okay. And they didn't, what was the reason you understood that they reviled and are not revalling till, till that they extended it?
I, I, I didn't get my notice. I live in Trumbull.
Okay. That's how you knew? Because you didn't get your notice when you, when you sent out your notices?
I'm sorry?
So you, you realized because you had to send your notices out by a certain time. So you expected to receive on your property in Trumbull and the similar notice that you had sent out to all the Fairfield resident, all, all the tax.
Uh, that's correct. I didn't, I, I wasn't even, uh, didn't even question it until I didn't get my notice.
Okay.
The other thing I think you'll see also, even if you did postpone until this year, you're not going to see much of a change in values. Um, the market in Fairfield is still increasing as of today. Um, so your sample size that you would be using for a 2020 revaluation would be including the sales that are, uh, from October 1st of 20 to October 1st of 21. And you're seeing the market already three months in and I don't see any indication that that market's going to uh, tank anytime soon. Uh, that prices are increasing even more as we're sitting here today. So I don't think that if you postponed, the outcome would be any different than if you did the revale in 2020.
Okay. No, I was just surprised because during the Zoom call, it was pretty, you guys pretty much said that somebody had tried, I don't know if it was Darian or whoever you said, someone tried to do it and they were being told they weren't going to be able to do it. So it made sense, but then all of a sudden I started hearing about these other towns who were doing it successfully. And, you know, I think there was some confusion, um, from what was talked about during the Zoom call to, to, that, that some people are, have been successful because of the COVID argument to OPM.
And I, and I don't know if that's, if that's true or hearsay. I've never heard that the reasoning that they postpone is because OPM gave them the okay on that. Uh, that would be news to me. I haven't heard that as of today. They, I know they did postpone, um, but I don't know if OPM gave them the okay or they just forego the, uh, the funding that is required from, uh, revalling.
Okay. I'll call Senator Wong and say if I get. I'll call Senator Wong and see if I can get to that information. It'd just be interesting because under there, I know it's a limited basis for why they can do, why some of these towns can do it. And I think Wilton did it in 2017. But I'll tell you, I can't think of a better excuse or reason to postpone than a global pandemic that's going on. And that's why it kind of surprised me when you both told me that OPM wasn't allowing COVID because someone had tried it. It just shocked me, to be quite honest with you. It really did.
By no hand, they tried to postpone and were unsuccessful and started the revale in July.
Okay. I guess I got to get better state legislatures to contact OPM on their behalf. Because obviously Trumbull's and Greenwich did a pretty good job. Anyway, that's all the questions I have in regards to the residential. I appreciate your assistance.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions really at all? Okay, I'm seeing none. We've covered commercial and industrial, we've covered residential. So I want to thank Mr. Ross for being here and thank our guests for being here. Was it Chris? Chris and Mark, thank you guys for being here. Appreciate the work you've done. And we're going to go to item number four, which is to adjourn. So just a reminder, Mr. Walsh?
Well, you know, I'm not, these are not questions anymore to Mr. Fazio or Mr. Murray. So I really appreciate your assistance in answering all the questions. Thank you very much for your continued assistance. I guess I'd be interested to hear from my other board members in regards to, you know, what your thoughts are in regards to maybe the Board of Finance taking a stronger look at this, our charter rights the next time. Anybody else think that we should be doing it?
Well, I'll speak for myself. I absolutely think we should do, we should file the charter. And I think Mr. Baldwin agreed with that. We just have to make sure there's a board, whoever's on the board needs to be aware that it's coming up and be on top of it. So what do we have, another five years, right? Five years? So
The project starts earlier than that, so we're probably only about
About four years, so I was going to say, yeah. So I was going to say, if the next revale's in five, we probably, three and a half, four years need to be aware of
Yep.
that this is coming up and to ensure that we participate. I think, I think the board would agree with that. Does any, how about this, does anyone disagree with that? So it's unanimous. So, thank you. Any other comments or thoughts? Okay, this was very helpful, Mr. Ross. We appreciate it, we appreciate you being here. This gets us set as we continue on this journey of our budget, which we will start tomorrow. Seven o'clock, we'll be here and then we'll kind of, we'll review the agenda. The first select woman will begin our meeting with her budget presentation and we'll follow with questions and then we'll get on with the department heads. So with that said, we'll go to item number four. Can I have a motion to adjourn, Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Mr. Basin? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night. See you tomorrow.
Thank you.